What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today, we're gonna look at I C M adjusted post flop ranges. So what I did basically was to run sims with a very, very strong I C M structure. So what I did was I took a structure where eighteen seventeen players are paid and eighteen players are left. So we're on the bubble. So risk premium should be really high. We have, this is roughly, it's roughly ten chips for one big blind. So we have twenty big blind. Our opponent has twenty big blind. He's under it again. And then there's a distribution, but to make it short, like this is a nine big blind stack, forty big blind, thirty. But there is five big blind stacks here. There's four big blinds here. Then there's a bunch of middle stacks like that. Or risk premium should be really, really high, especially given like we can't go bro because of the bubble. So what I did was I ran a whole, a whole script. And I basically solved it down for post flop I C M. So we're gonna see how it changes basically with the I C M and with we can compare with Chippy V. Let's get started. I don't wanna call. Do you call every deuce in your range here?
No, apparently we do.
Apparently we do.
At least if we have it over probably to the
Dude, bro has bet half his stack. You crazy? I'm not calling every deuce here.
We just saw the sims that it over folds like a hand like this and Chippy V might actually find a check raise some weight, but it's gonna fall.
Are you facing the same opponent?
But it over, it does defend its pairs.
He's betting range, so of course we have to defend the pair and it's a small bet. If it was a bigger bet, yeah, sure. The one is one third. Yeah, got a cool all pairs.
So King four does still check raise some. I thought it would be in there a little bit, but not in this spot. I thought it was Chippy V.
So this is the stone money bubble and the guy is betting half of his chips as a range bet.
Oh, he bet one point eight big blinds.
Uh, he's twenty big blinds D. He's betting one point eight basically.
Oh, he's twenty. Then why does it say eighteen? Then he's got, oh, he bet eighteen. Sorry. Ignore me. I, yeah, this, this makes more sense.
This is a twenty big blind sim under the gun. This is big blind.
It wasn't symmetrical twenty big blinds though, Louis, right?
Yeah, it is.
No, it's just us. We each had the heads up players are at twenty. There's short stacks involved.
You're just playing the same person every time, right?
Yeah, twenty were twenty effective on the hand against under the gun. Then there's five big blinds, four big blinds, and it's the stone bubble.
It's more against low jack, I don't think, yeah.
Yeah, the opponent's static. Got it.
So.
Good morning, Gail.
Morning.
Alright, so.
Fold, oh.
Probe, small.
Yeah, stab.
Yeah, I'm, I'm give slow giving up without a spade in my hand. I'm not gonna get out of line here.
On the turn, you gotta bet some, no?
I'm not getting out of line on the bubble, dude. Sorry.
It's a true, we could have a three sometimes, we could have a flush.
We could.
We have.
I wonder how many flushes he checks because it's a paired board.
I'm not asking you, I'm not asking you a big bet here, just a little.
Yeah, eighteen.
Spice in there, you know?
I'm, I'm happy to check fold, but you go, you do.
Oh, no.
You wanna probe Alfie?
It's not, not happy at all. Do a check.
It wants to probe a little bit larger sometimes, but yeah, checking's the play.
Let's see.
Oh, we're back in the Pio streets?
We're back.
What has happened?
All hell broke.
We lose, we lost the horror licenses.
Alright, good talk.
Two thousand seven again.
I thought that only happens the first week of the month.
Yeah, no, I'm just kidding.
So not, not necessarily anything. There's nothing basically. We don't clean up. Would there be a card where we would lead on? Not really, maybe a four or five, big maybe, right? Alright.
Five is six gives us, yeah, okay, it's not like looking at our exact team. I mean, maybe if you had a six of spades here, maybe like, sure.
Checking back his king. Okay, check. So how do you play a hand like, I don't know, four or five of spades here?
Hmm, slow.
So he doesn't have very many seven acts, so we could probably start raising that right away. If fast plays the big draws. So you got a straight draw, flush draw, word, but he doesn't have, he might have sixes or he's got a seven suited, I guess that's it, right? So.
So. I think I'm calling for five of spades.
I would call for five of spades.
Oh, yeah.
If I have seven, six, I'm raising.
I think overall we might have small smaller frequencies of raises in I C M.
Well, yeah, a lot smaller. Uh, so here we fold. And then I open the tree.
So we're tighter. We do, I think part of the reason why we fast play some of our good draws is because we are over folding and we lose some of these like so like, you know, the king five off, queen five off, over with like a straight redraw backdoor flush, like we start losing a lot of that shit here. So I think you find better stuff to replace it.
That's actually more raising than I would have expected.
Yeah, see how much we're over folding?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's obvious for I C M.
So if we're still raising value, we're losing some of our like more bluffy type stuff that we just fold. I think that pushes more better combos that might like to just see a turn in the raises.
What did he do with the four, five of spades?
Hmm.
I mean, Lo- LoJack's LoJack shouldn't have many sevens. He's only got twenty bigs, like king seven suited, ace seven suited. But he, he shouldn't have like seven, six, eight, seven, nine, seven. He should just open fold those.
Interestingly, it's raising hearts and clubs.
Yeah, the backdoor and the front door flush are just calling.
I think that's an equity realization thing. While like you prefer to fold straight away with, when you have clubs and stuff.
Is the nine eight just spades?
So, um, just a sec.
Is this one a C E V?
Yeah, this is the Chippy V one. And then this one is the I C M one. So let's look at twenty six, twenty eight percent raise versus twenty percent rates, you know? And then the fold holding more with I C M?
Not a whole lot more though. It is more. Compared to some other ones, it was like ten fifteen percent over folding some words.
So on that board, we're calling less, raising more and folding more.
Yeah.
Uh, the nine eight. Is that just spades, two overs and straight draw?
Yes.
Is this U T G big blind again or?
Okay, that's the spades. Yes.
Is this the twenty big blind under the gun versus big blind?
You have it no luck right now for
I C M.
Check, um, big blind check?
No, it's, I'm just going through the loop.
Is that where all our range is going? Yeah, okay. I'm like, why do we not have full weight of all this shit?
So one thing I noticed as well, we look at the leads at I C M, you're leaving a lot more.
That was really my question. If you had it no luck for checking.
Uh, no.
Uh, we know what else I just realized? You didn't run I C M ranges, did you?
Nope.
We talked about that last time.
Yeah, so we can compare one to one, Ken.
It's way different, man.
Oh.
Really?
Yeah, I, I think you might have some skewed ranges because if you ran the like in the I C M one, did you run I C M ranges in the I C M solve?
I have two different, uh, twenty big blind, uh, sims basically.
Right, but the pre.
It's the same range.
Just trying to get an idea of how much. Trying to get an idea, I guess, how we adjust our ranges, but it's not really it's probably still okay.
Just a second, I think I closed the wrong one. Yes.
Just to get some general ideas.
It's gonna be different from uh, from reality because the ranges are different than they would be in I C M.
Yeah, so like.
But it's still kind of useful for comparative purposes, right?
Well, so like versus on the gun, we're probably folding a lot of those all suit aces pre flop, right? On the bubble, like we're not calling it on the offsuit aces.
Yeah, I'm, my only question is that if we are adjusting our ranges, are we still over folding by tons? Like if we already go to the flop with a tighter range, does our over folding percentage go down?
So let's just look quickly at the ranges. So like it's very, very similar.
Yeah, to do that, Joey, I guess we'd have to run it with the, with the I C M ranges.
Yeah.
To see, yeah, yeah. This is basically just like trying to isolate the effect of I C M on our strategy and
Exactly, and see how it.
The other variable.
From Chippy V.
Now, this is very good because I, I've never ever seen I C M post swap solves yet.
Exactly. And then I just wanna do the ranges quickly. This here, boom. So this is the.
I mean, this is really just what we're seeing how I C M affects your see betting frequency or see betting sizing, your defenses and compared to just normal Chippy V environment with the same range. It isolates the, uh, the variables.
I guess we could just pretend we now locked it into these ranges, pretending this is I C M and then just see how plays, I guess.
Yeah, and then don't play the bottom, you know, but, uh, the same range exactly, yeah, I see. There's no mistake here. So, back on the wheel. Okay, so here would you raise the king of spades?
No.
I would and I would bet the turn small with it.
Nah, I wouldn't. I think if you ra- raised the king of spades, you went backdoor straight draws with it. I think this is too junk and I would fold.
I think we do have backdoor straight draw with it.
Well, I mean, like.
It connects with the ten and jack.
King nine, king eight, maybe be the worst.
Well, check, that's small.
You prefer the low.
Oh, you're talking about double backdoor with the top and bottom.
Yeah.
If it's like jack four three and we have king five with the king of spades, I would like it better.
Ah, yes.
Because then the low cards that improve our straight draw are not good for him.
We need extra kind of equity, right?
Ah, yeah, it doesn't even like the eight.
And it's not raising, it's jamming.
Louis, go down to the king four off. What part is raising? The king of spades?
Yeah, bottom pair with redraw.
Yeah, like jack ten with a flush draw, there's like, it's gonna be a really polar response on this board, right? We've just seen that over and over again.
So can I see their opening range? I'm gonna suspect they have pocket fours in their range where in real, in I C M, they're not gonna have fours. Are they still there?
No.
Twenty big under the gun, hell no. Who's opening, Louis?
So, okay, just fold.
I thought they'd be in there some way. And Chippy V.
No, no, it's too wide.
Okay. Oh, he bets kind of big here. So when he size up, do you call a deuce and fives?
Uh, twos for sure are gonna start folding, right?
Fives, I think you have to call.
Deuce with the backdoor draw, you call.
Yeah, maybe ace two, two maybe.
Think I'm folding both.
What do you do with two, seven of diamonds?
Folding.
Hmm, yeah, folding. Folding pre, what do you want about?
Louis, on this one, let's look at his, um, see bet range too.
I think he's range betting. Yes, he is. Sizing up a lot.
Is he?
Yeah.
Has he ranged bet every board so far?
No.
Oh, okay.
He's extremely cautious on some boards. On, on others, he's like he has no respect. So he goes thirty six. I call every five.
Oh, this dude's calling.
Every two.
Get the hell out of here.
I mean, you don't have enough draws to continue with. You have to continue with pairs. It's not like you have straight draws plus draws here.
Folding east and suited, folding some ace jack suited without the backdoor.
That's true. The one that we saw some bottom pair fold was like a flush draw board, I guess, so we can defend other stuff last week.
What is king four offsuit here and king four suited, one over? Then a backdoor flush and then big hopes?
Yeah, it's punting. Look at that.
Yeah, mo- mostly a dream. That's what king four is.
Backdoor flush, backdoor straight. It matches the bottom set or not, that's not even a set.
Right, wow, right.
Why are fours going crazy?
Have they over with the king, I guess, in a straight?
I mean, pocket fours, pocket fours.
That's funny.
Oh, pairs will, they'll often match.
You gotta pull bluffs from somewhere.
They often match bottom pairs some way when you're bluffing, like since we're bluffing a four here with king four, king three, a lot of times you see in the raise distributions that usually uses some pairs at some weight to match them. It's got a full frequency here, which is a little wild to me.
Well, I think it's because you don't have any blockers to auto folds. You can turn equity with uh, any straight draw, like a three, a six or a four or all good cards, you barely.
And put in the raise, does he fold if he has like pocket nines? Is he just gonna fold immediately or? Notice also we're just folding sixes and sevens on the flop. Yeah, okay, so you can make him fold some like sixes, sevens, eights.
Yeah.
As well.
Also raise back.
And we just don't have bluffs, right? Like we don't have three, four. What are we doing with six, four? Probably just calling.
It's three.
Blown off of it.
Why don't we have three, four?
Alright, we might have three, four, but we're probably also just trying to realize with that, right?
Yeah, I think we're probably just calling.
Yeah. So you're pulling like random ace high stuff that has the overcard and backdoor flush and can fold, make, make like ace tenfold. You're pulling the king four, the pocket fours.
Yeah. Ooh, okay, so four.
And for value, it's just king, queen, two pair and sets, right?
It's just super tight, right? It doesn't slow play at all. Queen A, okay.
I'm not defending a three flop.
No, probably not, right? So just a fold and then how do you play? How do you play like ace jack here when you have it?
I mean, in Chippy V, do you guys defend this?
Yeah.
Yeah, Chippy, big blind, yeah.
Bottom.
Oh, yeah, we're low jack, okay.
I think, don't we go down to like sevens or sixes?
I think, first of all, I think this is under the gun. So if I a replayer, only that goes up to six max. So, yeah, this is like an eight max.
So it was run for eight players, but it's only showing six on the table.
Okay, versus under the gun, I'm folding this. I call queen nine.
It's a defend.
I think it's like a, yeah, like a break even defend, but I cut those out.
You're folding this in Chippy V?
Yeah, versus under the gun, yeah.
Are you raising the queen of spades?
No.
Are you raising if you have ace eight with the ace of spades?
No.
No.
Ace five with the ace of spades.
Check. He bets range again.
In Chippy V, G T O wizard goes down the queen four off.
Versus under the gun?
Yeah, at twenty big blinds.
That's wild.
Okay, so you can't do with, with ace.
Cards are good.
But ace seven would be a thing. But not two hundred big blinds, you know?
At two hundred, maybe it's queen nine.
I think it's a bit tight when it'd be like when you do. You get to realize my equity.
Yeah, just a queen and don't fold really.
Yeah. Right, so only four percent range here, yeah? At Chippy V? Uh, jack six, four. So.
Even ace jacks just like not raising. It's kind of crazy.
Don't have it. Jack six, four.
Can you go jack five, three? No, that's different. Jack seven, five, maybe? No, it's different too. I take it back.
Um, just looking at my other folders, because I have two folders of these.
But you ran a full representative subset of flops. There should be something, right?
Oh, yeah, for sure. I'm just wondering if I have better. Um.
Was this the stuff from like two years ago where we were all running Pio all the time?
No, this is stuff I ran yesterday. Okay, so no, I don't have better. So the best one would be this one. And then the board is jack six, four. So there should be something, jack. Six, five? Um. Jack seven.
Jack six, five should be similar enough. Jack five, three will change stuff because you'll get more wheel ace interaction.
Jack six, five would be, would be good, but we need a flush draw.
You have it at the bottom.
A pair of six?
No, never mind. Yeah, the, the bottom one here might be the best we have.
Jack five, three, yeah? I think that's it. Uh, check, that's small. Very, very, very different strategy, right? Like Chippy V, you're raising every jack. Here you're raising the best jack with a backdoor flush. With the front door flush, actually. Right? You're not even raising his jack.
We need all of the equity.
Yeah.
We need them to be drawing dead.
Funny.
And the risk premium is quite high here still.
Look at pocket six here. Chippy V just calling. I C M never call. Like, okay, thank you very much.
It's because, it's because the, it's not a set on the left anymore.
Oh, that's right. And we don't have the.
But pocket threes are calling, yeah.
Exactly. But Chippy V twenty big blinds, you very often just call with your sets, right? Whereas at I C M.
Too strong.
Yeah, doesn't do it at all.
It's the, I think denial of equity is more the name of the game in I C M.
Hmm.
Let's fold.
So Mike, maybe, maybe jamming your set of fives on the turn was better after all, huh?
Okay, let's see how far we're gonna hold to this pair of jack. This is an easy call.
I'm dead. GG.
What a bad river. Are we supposed to bet here after I go check, check?
Hmm. In Chippy V? Probably. I don't know what size though.
Definitely betting small in Chippy V. I C M, I'm probably just calling.
I, I was gonna say I'm probably check calling here. Actually, uh, my question, Nick, is when, when you check call, uh, what size are you folding?
Down to the top.
If they jam.
If they jam? I mean, like if they made like a really healthy sized bet here, would you, would you fold?
Like three fours or pot?
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Um. Yeah, I'm still calling.
Okay.
So check, the pot is ninety six. He bet, say he bet eighty six until ninety six.
I wouldn't fold to a jam even. There's no size.
If he pots it or still you still have an easy call?
Maybe I would, I don't know.
He doesn't really.
Danny can't make his mind up today.
I can't make my mind up. There's a straight, so like, I don't know. We have the nut boat blockers, but still.
Hmm.
Fairly relevant.
Yeah, it's pretty relevant.
If, like, if you were
Go ahead.
You were really deep and non-I C M, maybe but I C M, but you were deeper, it makes a good like bluff candidate because of that. But yeah, like here, you, you, they're never holding a ten.
Right.
Yeah. Don't we have blockers to the straight as well then?
Look at that. I couldn't make my mind up. It mixes.
Yeah.
Which sim is that, Louis?
Huh?
Is this Chippy V or I C M?
Uh, this is I C M when he goes all in, but he doesn't do it.
Okay.
He just never uses all in.
Watch me.
Watching you.
I can hear a queen, king. It's all in.
You wanna rate?
That's pretty interesting that he never does it, actually.
Yeah, he never does it. He wanna stay alive.
In Chippy V, he'll do it, right?
Yeah, for sure.
So maybe we should be going for less thick value. Just go for the pot bet or whatever.
Yeah. Okay, so easy call here?
Hmm.
Just.
I, well, do you raise kings here or like no kings?
No kings.
Ace, king?
Not interaction.
King going.
Negative.
Maybe with the queen of spades.
It's king nine or better to open here.
Okay, so let's see. So check, that's small and then king, queen is not even raising. Jack ten with this, uh, queen, jack with a spade?
Yeah, king two isn't raising. It's, it's king nine or better to open.
Yeah.
You can see the trend here where you check raising for value a lot less, so you're also check raising at the level.
Also like a pair, bottom pair and a flush draw. Look at this here. Just going all in with queen deuce of spades. Just going all in with windows of speed.
Max pressure. Has enough equity, I guess. No matter what.
Fades go to twos, go to queens, go to you're flipping if you get called.
Hey, do you black bet two pair here after turn checks checks?
Yes. That's ninety five.
I might check call here, honestly. How how big's the risk premium?
Massive.
Massive, I might just check call. Would be so uncomfortable to face a jam here, though.
Was betting small sixteen percent of the time.
What tool are you using here? I didn't know Pio could do this.
Uh, this is a GTO trainer built in pile.
Okay.
So yeah.
This is what we used before GTO wizard.
Yeah.
This was every week study session.
We're betting a lot, I started turn goes check, check. We're betting a little bit of kings. We're betting non showdown hands, queen jack, jack ten. That miss to get. A size to fold here? I guess.
For sure.
Okay, so we have a bunch of flushes that just wanna. And nothing is going on in here again. Zero all ends, you're just like eh. Betting one hundred.
Pot or third?
So say you bet one hundred. Like this out of position, and then he just goes in, you're not folding the flush. You're folding some flashes, geez, I gotta get back to. Do homeworks.
What happens if it's not a flush completer uh, on the river? What if it's like a two of clubs? We have any, what's our biggest bet size?
Still like pot, but then you you get the. B fifty five coming in where it wasn't before.
Now you're you're playing, you're bluffing the the busted flush draw.
Look at this, we're bluffing. A lot. More than we would in chippy V, aren't we? Seems like quite a lot of bluffs.
I mean. Struggling with this because like in an I C M spot. In this scenario, big blind's gonna fold like pre flop. Fifty five, sixty percent of their range.
True.
So I'm really starting to struggle with this.
Well, yeah, I I think we're probably using this word wrong, like we should be looking at chippy V and I C M each scenario and see. How the I C M is affecting that specific word.
Yeah.
I'm right, I'm gonna run some ranges for you, give them to. And you can do it over the weekend.
Like what we were doing at first, Nick.
Yeah. Because this isn't really with the ranges, yeah, we shouldn't really be studying how to play hands.
Yeah, because big blinds like just doesn't have much of an all suit range at all, it's only the very top basically, and then suited stuff is pretty wide.
Definitely useful to go beyond the flop. I like that we're seeing some river stuff.
But still, if you use like an I C M range, maybe you are check raising king queen, you know?
The difference is. At chippy V, when we block. We can block very big. Whereas at I C M, we never block very big.
Yeah, I C M a lot of times is just smaller sizings overall, right? Because you can apply. Same amount of pressure for less.
Then are you betting more?
It's a good question.
You're checking more at I uh, chippy V? So you are betting more, but. Sizing down. Right, let's see how long we hold to this king. Check. Oh, he's betting big, he's gonna get us. Oh.
It's fine.
It's fine.
It's a big bad board.
Oh, he checks the turn. Well, it seems like we hit two pair every time. Wonder what?
Yeah, we're running hot.
Seventy nine?
Seventy nine. Why? Why not size B?
Because we can get called by a lot worse, and when he bets the flop and we call. We lose a ton of trash and he still has a lot of trash because he's gonna range bet a king high board. And on the turn when he checks. He caps himself a little bit, so this is one of our best value hands, top two pair. This is going to go for big value. Seventy nine.
Why not pot or block? If he has a king, he'll call pot.
You bet seventy nine and he jams.
Uh, only lose to one hand functionally.
Queen jack.
There's a bunch.
He's probably not checking back the turn with.
On a double flush draw board, he's not checking a set of nines.
He could have the one combo of kings potentially.
He does have the one combo of kings, all the queen jacks. The suited ones, so like five more, four more combos. Like, there's just not enough stuff here.
I want to learn from our last one and bet big or bet small and not go the in betweener. I think this slots nicely into just a big bet. But the ten, hmm, the ten does hit a lot of our, like, we're gonna have a lot of Jack ten, Queen ten, right? And those we would either check or block bet.
I'm curious, I would check here, I think.
I would bet.
I'm gonna pot it. Uh, he would have called a block for sure.
Checking pure on the river. Not betting king.
Most frequent.
Look at this, two pair.
Really wants to block the straight to go for value with the king there, it looks like.
That is weird. In fact, start checking range with this combo of two pair.
Uh, king five and king three both bet decent weight. Yeah, king ten doesn't wanna.
We block all the calls, right? Like, we want to get looked up by a.
Yeah, a ten.
King queen or a an ace ten and.
Yeah, like nine, three and five, three both bet here, so. I guess it's going for the, i- it seems weird to be going for a check raise with king ten here.
What's it go for?
Is it even raising? Let's see, like, give, put in the check and then give and give them like the. Whatever size.
I think like Danny said, the ten blocks a lot, some of the calls when we go for thinner value.
Louis, click check. And then seventy nine? And then are we jamming?
Oh, just call.
They're ten X, so we really want to unblock that.
It's the Louis, they could have aces theorem, like, he could just have queen jack. You can't, you can't jam king ten, he could just have it.
I know, that's what I'm saying.
And then what do we get called by? You know?
And then you're just like, what have I done, you know?
Yeah, we only really get called by king queen. King jack.
Look at this, king ten is drawing and drawing in red. Like red, 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 what have you done? It's not a value bet, Pete. Not at I C M on the bubble, at least. Who is betting big? We raise him? No. Probably not, right?
Or check fold? I would play donk here. I can't help myself.
We have a spade, right?
We have a spade and we have a ten.
The ten I don't really mind, it's more like the spade.
So when I'm gonna get spicy here, I go by my high course, my jack was a spade, and then I got the redraw straight to the ten, I might go for, I might get spicy, but. This one, I'm like, whatever, I don't care, I probably just check fold.
Maybe if we, maybe if we had the jack of diamonds with the ten of spades, that could also be okay.
Let's see if the the jack of spade would be better. Jack enough, jack of spade eh, might be.
Ten of diamonds, he nailed it.
Yeah, it's nice to have both suits.
But play check first and see if which combos check raise, if any, that's really what I was worried about.
The reason, the reason we get so many more donks than I C M is because a lot of our check raises will fall out. We prefer to just.
Check, make them bet.
Look at how often here he checks. That's a function of like low boards here. Uh, seems to be checking back a lot.
That paired board, he's not going for like the range, the low small bet.
See, exactly, exactly.
Well, it would bet more if you had a one big blind option in probably.
It's one point eight, it's very close.
Well, it's almost too big, so if you cut that in half the size, it's gonna probably drive the betting frequency up a decent bit.
Yeah, I agree, maybe double, right? So bet? Uh, what do you want to do? Just fold?
Jack ten is a raise with just a jack of spades now. Jacka, spades, ten of diamonds is the one. Which is what Danny said, by the way.
Got him.
Uh, do we try to get a queen nine to fold? And lay side to fold?
So we dunked and then checked the turn?
Yeah.
I cap ourselves when we check the turn, I'm scared.
It's kind of dicey.
That's it.
If we had a six. I mean, can we make an ace high fold for twenty nine?
We can try to get a side before.
I think in theory we can, but in in game, they might not.
If we. If you bet thirty here, he's not calling you sigh, see?
Yeah, I'm not betting any more than thirty, that seems.
I'm af- I'm afraid my opponents will, man.
You mean, why would he call an ace? Just an ace for fun. You know?
It's a trips board. What can I have?
Oh, my goodness, he just had the house.
And he didn't raise, right? We can just have a king, so.
No. Yeah. See another low board, is he range betting here? Question number one.
Were we supposed to have left there?
No.
Okay.
So here's the thing. This is why, this is how this could play out much differently in real life at I C M. Because none of us have offsuit eights, really. Like, we don't have. King Adolf here. In real life, we don't have queen Adolf, Jack Adolf.
Is he supposed to range bet?
Given the ranges in play, I would say no.
And and chippy V, do you think he's range betting?
No, because that we're looking at chippy V ranges and then I C M model. So we have good board coverage here with offsuit. Which we wouldn't have with I C M ranges. Which I'm saying, so I think it changes things drastically.
And you keep repeating the same thing, you don't get the point here. Point is that we want to see the difference when it comes to I C M. You know? So my question again. Is he rings betting with I C M here?
No.
How often do you think he bets checks?
Somewhere to the last board, I would imagine, sixty, sixty-five percent check.
Alright.
I think you bet a lot here, don't you? Eight, five, I don't know the size he wants it to use, uh.
Do we have our donk here first? Okay, so not with this end for sure. Okay, now. Alright, we check. Is he range betting?
He's betting a ton.
Oh.
Wait. All in?
Now he's going all in, look at that. Now he's like, you can have aces all you want. I got tens. Oh, he's like, you don't have aces and I have pocket tens.
I mean, like, if you're a hundred deep chippy V, this board, you get over bets, I think, right? So now. We're saying like, yeah, we're gonna leverage the. The nut. Advantage, range advantage even harder and just rip it.
Okay, so just fold? Oh, look at this, he's betting so big. Okay, so do you call a five?
Just fold. Yeah, because it's rainbow. Although it's ace high.
I'm curious what we do with queen out of clubs, I'm still gonna say fold, but I'm just curious if that wants to continue.
And then here, fives and sixes are folding. Starting to mix folds, you don't call backdoor flashes on A side against another gun?
King six, queen six fold the most because you can make two pair and get cooler by two pair. Ace, queen, ace, king. I don't know why nine sixes. I guess it just has at least straight interaction. And I guess they can still have ace nine in range, right?
And then king queen of spade at clubs, like, it's tempting, right? Kill one?
Not against big bet.
Yeah, maybe not. Calling every ace, that's. About it, and then fives and sixes that have extra equity? Thirty six, fold. Oh, here comes a good one, how do we structure our raising range here? I would just call this. Do you raise like? Ace, five of spades here, I think you do.
That's a good question.
I would call this one. Raise this far as.
Yeah, what are the raises here? Do we raise anything? Pocket sevens? And. And yeah, maybe, yeah, maybe the ace high flush draws and pocket sevens.
Ace seven, king seven? Harvey?
When you raise ace five of spades, you're gonna wind up praying for a seven on the turn for a chop a lot.
Okay, so we call here and then let's see the. Looks raising some. You guys see, right? It's folding the flush draw, the ten eye flush draw.
On the flop?
On the flop.
Oh, I see, twenty-six. Just fold immediately?
Yeah.
Hmm.
Ace five of spade, not raising at all.
So what is it? Queen seven with the queen of spades, really? Okay.
Seven ace with the spade?
And only ace, queen, ace, jack of spades, huh? Okay.
And then sevens.
You really do just need all the equity or like the most marginal of backdoors with a blocker and stuff.
The super nuts.
Is that queen, are those queens and jacks really blockers?
They're the queen and jack.
Seven is the blocker.
Oh, okay.
Sterling moth and bear with the
Yeah.
A little extra, extra.
It's like not, I guess it's the stuff that's just under the calling threshold, where it's like, I don't feel great about calling here.
Are you gonna call?
Nope.
No backdoors, fold.
Oh. Check call.
Yeah, easy call.
Yep, non-ICM raise, ICM call.
That's the thing, right? The, do you raise, how do you raise flush draws here? How do you structure your range with flush draws?
Do a lot of calling in ICM.
Yeah, Chippy V, this is a combo draw, it's gonna be more resilient against a, a re-raise, so you're okay to raise this, uh, Chippy V. But ICM, probably just a call.
I don't know if you'd always raise the, like, you still might have to pick and choose which nine X, ten X combos, okay, likes the low ones. Uh. I'm surprised nine, five and nine, six aren't doing it.
They start to become too good.
Yeah.
Right? They just wanna realize equity, cuz I mean, probably nine, three is check raising and folding to a jam. Right? And then nine, five and nine, six don't wanna have to fold to a jam, so they just call. But even Chippy V, you're just gonna run them.
Oh, are we really folding those to a jam? Can, alright, now we have to see it.
Yeah.
I mean, we do have nine high, but also uh, click raise and click jam, Louis.
Thing is, you keep, oh. I was gonna say it's never jamming.
It's jamming a lot.
It's jamming a lot.
So it's all of the, it's all of the stuff that's ahead and vulnerable.
Okay, we do just fold.
Yeah. Which is why it doesn't wanna do it with nine, five, nine, six, their equity is too good.
Uh huh.
Alright.
Hmm, okay.
Again, how do we structure the raise here with spades? Uh, it's easy. Right? We don't raise spades.
You only raise the open-ended straight flush.
Yeah. Or the offsuit.
No, it's al, it's already a made straight.
Yeah, the made straight with the open-ended straight flush.
Yeah.
Okay, so call and not raise any.
It had the ace ten, the ace ten was doing the raise also.
Yeah. Seven.
This is really good.
Yeah, can we, can we shenanigan here?
Yeah, for sure. Thirty-four.
Yeah. Thirty-four, okay.
Yeah.
It lacks thirty-four a lot.
Yeah.
Hmm. Seven pairs, you're leaving a ton.
Yeah, your range is so heavy with sevens here. Right? We don't fold the pair.
And then?
And then?
And then we have showdown.
Jack. Eight.
Seven with the flush draw.
I think our nine rarely, if ever wins at showdown, but I also don't wanna bluff, so.
Yeah. We're gonna have lots of sevens that check back here that are gonna protect our range, so it's gonna be okay.
Mm-hmm.
So jacks. Tell me, no. Jack nine. Jack nine. Four in the four pairs, ah, yeah, I think Jack nine four in the four pairs. Very similar, no?
Four is gonna pair, fall below our offsuit range, but we're still gonna be defending all the fours, so it's still gonna have a bit of the same idea.
I just wanted to see if we do it more, actually. We probably do it more, right? Sixty percent, but we're just guessing, cuz I don't have the same. We hit the nine, we just checked.
Yeah.
And fold.
Louis, oh my god, you sticky mofa.
I'm sorry. This guy has been betting and betting and betting. And checking and checking, and he goes around then around then around then, you know? You gotta call some nines here, and then if you're gonna call some nines, you might as well have the worst fucking kicker ever in your head, no?
It, it's that I don't wanna have a spade here, right? Like, I wanna unblock his bluffs and having spades.
I feel like having spades or not is getting less and less of a factor, cuz he's not like blasting his spades.
Yeah, I guess he's, he also doesn't have the spade that you want, right? Like, he doesn't have the three of spades here very much.
Hmm.
Ace three, so. Less relevant.
At least nine you fold.
But I, I kind of disagree with your premise, like, do we have to call some nines here?
I think.
He is calling a few.
It's, it's second pair. You're gonna call some second pair, you don't know, bro, right?
It's hilarious to me that
It's a four liner.
The, the nine that folds is the nine four, because it blocks the ace four of spades, which is exactly what he had. Somehow the four is irrelevant.
Louis blocker genius.
Yeah, no, it's just that you, you have a garbage win, so it, I, for sure it's void, right? Whereas when you have an ace, ace could be bad very often, right? Especially against EP. The three, never do anything against EP.
What's the difference between nine, four and the nine, five? That makes no sense to me.
Uh, nine, five blocks the bottom end of the straights, I guess.
Yes.
Right, nine, six would be open-ended, we wouldn't we probably wouldn't lead it on the turn.
Then what's, if the, if the nine, four block, if the nine, five blocks the five, six, therefore we can call with it, and the four doesn't, what's the difference between nine, four and nine, three? What is that?
Uh, he might.
Four, five that he would've stuck around with?
He might fold ace three at some frequency pre-flop. In ICM here, twenty big blinds deep.
Okay.
Right? And I mean, it just has to, it, it's all the bottom of range, it just has to pick something, so, like, it's, it's even mixing nine, four here, right?
Right.
Okay.
Keep out.
Oh, that's gonna be interesting.
Check call? Yep.
We don't raise at all.
Uh, tens and eights we raise.
We'll raise our, we'll raise Jack nine.
Yeah. Jack nine of spades for sure, that's it.
Uh, turn one, check, check. I would block small.
Jack.
Turn one, check, check, Pete.
Yeah, it's okay.
You got a ten, oh, it's a four liner.
It's a four liner.
Yeah, well, check.
Exactly, you can't raise.
Yeah, right. Have you met the solver, Louis?
Okay, okay.
There you go.
Yeah. Hundred percent check.
You're gonna block and get called by better.
How about this, it's a four liner, he didn't go for thin value with top pair, top kicker.
Second pair.
Oh yeah, Jack them, so, yeah. Uh, okay, uh, deuce pairing, we didn't get prunes, so we still have all our garbage here, so I would probably check.
Yeah. I don't know. How do we construct our probe?
This guy isn't checking much, much aces in my head, in my mind.
I'm gonna probe with hands that contain a four or a five.
That would be wonderful, Pete, but we have spades here.
Yeah, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna cha, I'm gonna check rate or I'm gonna probe with a four or a five in my hand, not with the spades in my hand.
So we're check folding here.
Uh, oh, no, we're probably check calling.
Hmm, I don't think so. I think it's probe or check fold. Unless he bets eighteen, you could call eighteen, but I don't think he's gonna bet eighteen. He might. I think check fold is viable, though.
Yeah, I saw that.
What is this? Big bet?
It, it's over betting the pot.
Well, none of us said that.
The pot was sixty, it's betting sixty-six.
Yeah. Yeah, it is cereal. He brought the large probe.
Yeah, he's like, hmm, the deuce, it's a wonderful card, don't you think?
And like you said.
The spade.
He probably doesn't check many asex, right?
I, if he's gonna have checks, it is on that type of a board, right? Ace low, low?
True.
I don't think so.
I bet you he checks better flush draws sometimes.
I think he's range betting, oh, he's not range betting at all.
Yeah, ace low, low is a highly checked board.
Yes.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna overbet our ten eight of spades and make him fold king, jack of spades.
So then deuce pairs.
Cause he's gonna fold it, I think.
Deuce pairs, just like, ha, 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 but these are like all the four, the fives you said, Pete, right? So that was
Four and the five.
You've done these two down, right? But there's all souls.
Every flush draw.
Every flush draw.
You missed a C bet, it's taken over bet.
Did you miss a C now?
Cuz the The guy just has all kinds of aces in range, I'm
Louis, do me a favor, click, click the, uh, click our overbet here, the sixty-six, and let's see if he's, is he gonna just fold king, jack of spades?
Never.
I don't know, man.
Yeah.
Alright, that's the one he continues, alright.
Yeah, cause, he continues with all the spades and all the aces here. He's mixing, he's mixing folding pocket kings.
He folds some A six.
And all the single spade king highs are folding, right?
All the single spades, all the
Oh, that's still my favorite.
Oh.
What do you do with five deuces, Pete?
Uh, raise.
I don't know, man.
Ooh, baby, it's equity, it's a gutter, it's a flush, it's all the combos.
And you call with it.
And you call.
Before, cuz
It checks all the boxes, but
You don't wanna, yeah.
We don't wanna get blown off our, our realization, right? Is that the whole, yeah, okay, cuz if he jams, we can't continue.
Yeah, you, you prefer to raise the six, four than the five deuce.
Cuz you fold it, you fold the six, four.
Yeah, but he stops, you fold.
Yeah.
Five deuce just can't, oh my gosh.
Well, that's still a five. No, it's still fine, we have a deuce.
Yeah, fold.
That's
We have seven.
That's two cards in his range. Um, yeah, this is too thin. Fold.
Hmm, that's good, it's like, now a deuce.
Print take seven chips, oh my god.
I, I was playing live yesterday, the guy was like, never fold a deuce on this table, I'm like, oh.
Great, my specialty.
Did they embroider your name on the cloth?
This guy's just milk, milky, milky.
He's giving you the triple jarl.
He is, right?
You like your deuce now.
He has ace king, something like that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so we put him in?
I mean.
It's time to put him to listen, he went small, small, small.
We block four, five.
He's going for maxed in value, uh, I think he needs to, he deserves punishment.
Or rather, he never has four, five, but we block him from blocking four, five.
Alright, let's punish him.
What?
Oh my goodness.
Negative twenty-seven.
Wait, what just happened?
We tried to punish him, man, did he fold?
He's not folded. Louis lined up the ball on the sixty-two yard line and nailed the field goal.
Boom!
We most, oh, okay, but he normally would call.
Yeah, he's mixing fifty, fifty, so flip a coin, you can sometimes punish him, but
Do we know what he had?
Yeah. Hang on. He had Ace seven. Folded an ace. No, ace queen. Look at this.
Oh.
Ace queen.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got him real good.
It's, it's probably ace, jack or better for you to check raise there.
You know why I knew it was time to punish? Cuz when I have a queen here, I go for a triple gyro, I always get punished. So I knew it was the spot to take, that was gonna be fire.
Don't try this at home.
Small, 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 like he's, he's capped to exactly a, a good cap hand.
Yeah, it's not really ace, jack, right?
Yeah.
If, if you have a good player, you can maybe make him fold sometimes, but it's playing with fire, right?
Yeah.
Check fold. Check.
Hmm, do we not lead?
Uh. So, here's a spot like
Oh, it's a nine, right?
Yeah, like a nine is a one liner, this is just a check bluff catch, right?
Clearly, clearly. No, it's not.
Do we lead our nines, though?
Pretty thin, right?
Look at that, it's
Point six, five.
Range lead. Maybe. Oh, flop was check, check.
Hmm.
I didn't realize that. That makes sense, why we still have four, five in range? Check.
That fold.
Yeah. What's our one oddball bluff here?
I feel like it's king seven now.
Three six, three six of clubs?
King four again, maybe.
Yeah.
King four is better. King four is better.
King seven's there too, though.
I do see six threes.
Six-three.
And six-three's in there, is it the club?
Hearts.
Hearts. Oh, on the, there.
The one that can't really call.
Okay, check, let's see if he takes this for a ride.
It seems like the rule in ICM is if, if your hand is good enough to call, you almost always just call. And then it's like the ones that are not quite strong enough are gonna do some raising, and the ones that are like, dude, I can't call this, this hand's so good, I'm gonna do some raising.
Oh, my goodness, is he gonna finally? Box this up. This is what I've been looking for, for twenty hands now.
Oh, we got it, we got the spot.
Oh my goodness, look at this.
Straight in the trash.
Oh my goodness. The second barrel. One percent.
There's a lot of players that I'm happy to fold this on the turn, and there's a lot of players that I'm really annoyed on the turn.
Liver on the sliver.
Oh, so you. Okay, I need to find more folds with ace six hands here. I think, cause I think I'm bulk buckling up a little bit too much here, I'm not, like, you gotta call two streets for sure with your ace, no? I guess not, that's.
The, the problem is, like, when you put that many chips in, are you not kind of getting close to pot committed to call the river here?
Yeah, river's got weird.
It, it's a double flush draw board, so when the flush bricks, like, it's gonna be hard to fold an ace.
Look at all the, the, we just say all in with all our combo draws here. Pair plus flush draw or the gutter plus flush draw.
The offsuit aces are just.
Yolo.
Hundred percent ace six, ace seven. Ace eight, ace nine. Yeah. Just, just fold.
Are the suited aces equity driven? I mean, um, by suits?
Yeah, you, you got the actual draws. It's only the speed.
It's ma- yeah, mainly just spades.
Ace, ace five more than ace nine. So then, from nine to six, really bad blockers, why is that?
Well, that's the bottom of his opening range, right, is the suited nines and eights. So having a nine or eight here is really bad, it compresses him into the value part of his range.
Yeah.
Which is a lot of two pair and our aces drawing dead.
Wouldn't hands like eight, nine suited be? Double barrel buffs, one to ten?
We'd have to fold.
Yeah, which is why we don't wanna have an ace eight or an ace nine here.
Yeah. We're blocking his bluffs.
Yeah.
Hold.
Man. If he's small bet. I think I would for sure call. Yeah, I guess we do just fold here.
What do you do, you say you have king, queen as, uh, gloves?
Uh, mostly fold?
I don't know.
Uh, I would argue king, king nine is better than king queen on this board.
Is he big betting ace king, ace queen?
No.
So king, queen might be okay to float?
Oh, yes, yes.
He's jamming ace king, another one of these spots.
Range betting big or jamming.
Oh, range betting big.
Funny how, like, when it's like seven, six, five, he's like checking back eighty percent, and now he's just putting the pedal to the metal.
We don't have many two pair and stuff that feels comfortable. Like immediately on the flop, we're gonna be uncomfortable.
His ten is best but vulnerable, and so wants to apply a lot of pressure.
Right. Or his jacks.
Yeah.
Fives are starting to fold.
So king, queen, king, jack, you can get in there, the two overs. With the back doors.
Pocket six.
Oh. Interesting.
You gotta leave.
No way.
Check again.
There's no way around it, Pete, it's a four.
This one's different, though.
Why is he checking back a king high board?
Cause he has pocket queens.
Because it's paired trips, it's paired tree.
Hmm, pair board, yeah, fair.
Yeah, but he should be betting small a lot, like, this is, we're dominated here a lot by better stuff.
I don't think he's betting small a lot, I think he missed that board and he's checking back enough.
I think he still has a ton of better overpairs.
Yeah, he does, and king wants to range bet, so like, I, I think he has a lot of jacks, tens, nines here that are checking back.
Now, he'll still have king, ten suited, king, jack suited, partial as well, and stuff like that, I think.
Yeah. He's definitely gonna be checking back some kings as well, so like, I am not betting this. But, good luck.
Yeah, alright, we, we identified it, nice.
Yeah.
And on this river, just try to get to showdown?
Yeah, just pair against, hope he has ace high.
Beats and thames.
I was way up.
Way up.
Queens, we sandwiched it.
Oh, eh, huh, we're gonna lead.
This one is definitely gonna be a lead.
Yeah, this, this, I'm gonna lead.
Bigger.
Bigger.
Yeah, I would've went a little larger.
Why? When you lead, always lead small in general, why now?
No, not after check, check.
Not after check, check.
Our, our single pair hands are gonna be vulnerable here and are gonna wanna size up to put pressure on his spades that, uh, have two overs. So, you're gonna wanna bet a little bigger.
Get some fold equity with our four or our seven.
And we have lots of nuts.
Okay, now. Is this a good river? Probably not, right?
No.
He doesn't have much sevens.
He doesn't, so I would probably block here.
But he does have a couple, yeah, I.
Every.
I block.
Uh, uh, I think every seven he has would play like this. More or less.
We check, cause he could have a seven?
No.
Nah, I blocked it.
Ooh, no one said value bet.
Oh. No one said value bet, everyone was betting smaller.
Yeah.
But it worked out in our favor, cause he went with the big block, so easy call.
Yeah, we gotta call, don't we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's.
That's disgusting.
All he could have had. Is like ace seven suited and pocket sevens, for the most part.
Yeah.
Does he even have king seven in, under the gun range, king seven suited?
Partial frequency.
I think it's king eight under the gun. Oh, at twenty, I don't know, it might be, yeah, it might be partial.
I think, I thought king eight was like the lowest, but could be wrong.
Yeah, we have a point two weight on king seven.
Yeah, twenty percent king seven. Those kings get wispy, like the king seven, king six, in range construction there, so. As you move from forty down shallower. Easy fold.
What do you do in jacks, jack seven of clubs?
Call. Yeah.
A big bet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you free for about twenty minutes after the session, LP? Yes. Cause I got a spot, I, I'm right, I ran ICM. See this, jack seven folded.
Liver in the sliver.
Yeah, I was. I missed a lot of this, cause the work call came in. But I was interested to see how strong your draws have to be to block them in ICM. Like, are they, are they doing like the backdoor stuff like you're doing Chippy there, is that just gone?
Gone, in general. Well, not on all textures, but the ace side, king edge is gone. Uh, on treat key texture, almost all of it is gone, on flush draw, you have some backdoors.
Joey, it's basically just a ton of calling, anything good enough to call will call, and then a little bit of stuff below the call threshold will get out of line, like here you have the jack three suited getting out of line. And then like your super nuts will also just go for the raise, top two and bottom set.
And then, you need to find a bottom pair every now and then as well.
Yeah, I've seen a lot of calling with bottom pair.
Well, see here, it's mixing fold.
Yeah, this one, this one has more folds than the other ones I've seen.
But sometimes it picks bottom pairs to raise.
But yeah, jack seven just to fold, alright, for a big bet. It's a little spewy.
So I know he's checking a ton on this board. Does that mean we can bet the turn?
So he's gonna check back a lot of aces to start with? Um, so do we get better aces to fold here?
Yes. Definitely.
And seven is good for our range, so, yeah. You can probably mix here.
Do you guys wanna go small or big?
I think with the ace high, I wanna check.
I wanna check, yeah.
I would, I would go for it, but I'm not sure about.
Well, we get. We'll construct the big bet here, I think, a big bet probe or, or nothing.
Okay, big bet.
No, bigger. But not with this hand. No, but look at our strategy on, on nut spot. Cause I don't think we should probe the jack a lot, so we're basically just gonna say like, we have a seven. Or we're checking, or we have like a bluff.
One check, check, right?
Yeah, check, check, jack a heart.
I guess we could probe some jacks too.
Yeah, we're gonna have some probes, but not, not with ace high.
I would think you probed a ten more than a jack here. Well. More like a six, a five, or four.
Any overcard that hits them at all is gonna be kinda dicey.
Yeah.
So what are we doing it with, like?
Yeah, the jack is. The jack probably hits his range more, so, like, we have a lot of jacks, but he has the better jacks.
Why, we're only doing it with ace jack.
I'm, actually, I'm surprised, given that we are basically saying we have a seven or a bluff, that we're not betting bigger here. But I guess we don't need to.
Yeah.
Well, maybe polarize river a little more, but yeah, you polarize less than ICM, just gonna go be fifty-five and like pot the end.
Our, our seven wants him to call, right? Doesn't wanna price him out.
True. We're still checking a ton of seven X two.
Yeah.
All those offsuit, ten, seven, nine, seven, eight, seven.
Lots of suited sevens too.
Yeah. Here we go.
I was just thinking, oh, we can call a normal bet here.
We've, we have found pocket tens, fold.
Okay, but do you need to call sometimes? And if so, what? Wow, we have all the sets, right? We do. Ace eight. Ace eight's calling, you wanna have an ace?
I think we only have to call with like the top ten percent of our range.
Is he not doing that with ace king sometimes? So if we have an ace, and a black?
Yeah, is the ace good or bad? That's the question, I think we want straight redraw stuff, right? We want like seven, eight, or like five, six.
Well, ace eight's top, top. Eight, nine, or ace nine? Which one is better, eight, nine?
No, no, you don't wanna nine, cause he can jam nines.
You block value?
Oh wait, so you block value, hmm.
I'm legit only calling two pair, sets, and ace eight, and letting him have his way with the rest of my range. Let's see, let's see.
Yeah, I'm going to the Kenneth Kepel Academy of how to defend this flop.
I wanna call seven, eight, and five, six.
Okay, so ace is not great.
Nine, eight isn't liking it. Nine, eight off.
Nine, eight is not, not good at all. He could just have it with all the rest of my crap, like ace queens calling to lose him one, look how much it's losing.
My combos are there.
Even ace eight off's losing, so it wants a flush redraw too with the ace eight. What is it doing with that with first? It is a big part of the strategy.
Around nines and tens.
Queen ten, jack ten, king jack.
Well. Nines, tens, and jacks are the value hands that have the show, so all those bluffs are matching the value.
Yeah.
King, jack.
It looks like he has way more, it was like half of nines and tens in full are jamming, and then like a bunch of overcard stuff, seems pretty imbalanced.
They're all the three X we have to call.
But we just can't, it doesn't matter, cause he still has enough equity, I guess, against circle range.
Well, with, with a bet four times the pot, you're gonna have a lot of bluffs in there.
Would you fold a three to me?
Three X pot, yeah.
Dude, I'm folding most of my eights, I don't care, he's just like, whatever, like, just have it.
Yeah, like, look at seven, five suited, calling, losing chips.
Right, like, this is. I think it's losing chips overall, but the combos that call are winning, yeah, yeah, it's cause the hearts are so bad.
Really, this is not great.
Put this in a box. Little gut shot here, what if you have a spade in your hand, you call? This is.
No, not one, not one spade.
Then what? One spade, what do you do? You fold as well?
I think if we get jack ten with a spade.
No, ten, nine was spade.
I agree, I think ten, nine spade, pure fold.
Yeah.
With one spade.
I don't know. I raised my nine with a thin spade. Am I raising that on a final, one of, oh my goodness, I don't know.
You're draw, you're drawing to a draw here, you don't even.
It's a fair board, maybe we can raise a little bit more.
No, your raises are gonna be driven by a single spade here.
Can we raise? No, I don't know. I think we just call with, I agree with Joey, I think we call like jack, jack of spades ten, probably.
Oh my goodness.
No, we don't.
Yeah, the, the single king of spades.
What we've been seeing is you need the, the, like, the good draws to be able to call. Not the gut shots, not the backdoors. Even double backdoors are folding here.
And it's not a great raise candidate either.
Yeah, you wanna wrap around the queen, so king, jack, and king ten with a spade are gonna be better than jack ten here. Jack ten's a draw to a draw, right, it's just too, too weak.
Oh, yeah.
King jack at least can turn, uh, pop pair.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, thinking overcard. You block more relevant, and king, queen stuff.
I think there's more king queens in his value range than any other queen.
Right, like, you won't have queen to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or queen jack all.
When you hold the queen and the jack, you squeeze him to having more eights and nines in his range, so.
But the ace queen and king queen block more of his value.
Yep.
Alright.
Hopefully we retain a little bit of this. It's been a lot of good stuff here.